We're getting better, guys. We have a quorum. All right, let's first open the meeting. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, February 21st. The council has 14 members and one vacancy at the moment. Elections are coming up. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at as close to 10 o'clock as we can get a quorum. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and also available by council phone, an email, and just about everything else imaginable. So, let's begin by calling the roll.
Bernsen, Cheick, Fear, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Padilla, Padilla, really, Thomas, Hornish, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members of Crescent and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Before we begin the agenda, we're going to recognize Mr. Hernandez for presentation.
Madam President, members of the council, before I make my presentation, I've got a few confessions I want to make. That's dangerous. But last night, after I read my horoscope in the LA Times, and I usually go to the living section of the Times every day, I took the time to read a column of Dear Abby. And what the column was talking about was, it was a response letter as to a mother that was requiring that her daughter get a nice big diamond as to show a commitment from a suitor for marriage. And basically, Dear Abby had said that that shouldn't be the goal. The goal should be that the suitor should be the jewel. And most of the response agreed with her. But in reading the article, what happened is, it reminded me of when I was 18, wanted to get married, and my laws wouldn't allow me to do that. They basically felt that we should buy a house, and we should graduate from school and have jobs before we chose to do that. And we worked on that. But the way I got my wedding ring is, I asked my boss to make me a loan. Because I was just into escrow, I was just graduating from college, and I'd just got this job. But I wanted to marry my wife, and bottom line is, he made me that loan. I bought the rings, I paid them back right away. And years later, I got her the biggest diamond she ever wanted on that ring. But it reminded me of that story. I went through those thoughts, and they were good thoughts for me. Because my wife and I are getting ready to celebrate 28 years of marriage.
Congratulations.
And so today, what I have before me is Dear Abby. Not the original one. You see, Dear Abby is an acknowledged phenomenon of contemporary journalism. With a daily readership of more than 95 million, the column has devoted following, "Who wouldn't dream of starting their day without first reading Dear Abby?" It began in 1956 by Pauline Phillips, a 37-year-old newcomer to the San Francisco area. She impulsively phoned the editor of the San Francisco Chronicle and told him she could write a better advice column than the one she had been reading in his newspaper. To her surprise, he asked her to come in for an interview. She introduced herself as an average, middle-aged housewife who had been happily married to the same man for 17 years, and they had reared two loving teenage children. The editor asked Pauline to write sample replies to some of the previously published columns. She did, and the rest is history. When her secretaries were swamped by the onslaught, she recruited her 14-year-old daughter, Jeanne, who, under her mother's watchful eye, earned her allowance for responding to mail from teenagers. In 1963, Dear Abby branched into radio with a nationally syndicated show on CBS Network, and more than half of the shows were co-written by her daughter Jeanne. Attending to its enduring popularity, Dear Abby Show also aired for 12 years. In 1980, Jeanne became Dear Abby's executive director. Pauline Phillips was going to be here today, but her health basically asked her to stay home. And she's, I guess, in her mid-80s?
She'll be 83 in July.
83 in July. And Jeanne, who is the executive director, has been so much a part of this column that when they're recognized, we basically recognize Dear Abby as Pauline Phillips and Jeanne Phillips, and Jeanne Phillips is with me now. From a 14-year-old to following her mother's footsteps, to the kind of following they have. So, what I have before me is a resolution that is signed by the entire city council, which is rare, and also the mayor, which is even rarer, all in agreement that Dear Abby should be acknowledged as one of our country's icons, as someone who basically is making a difference on people's lives. And so, I'll read just the "therefore." And it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the council of the city of Los Angeles does hereby congratulate Pauline and Jeanne Phillips, also known as Dear Abby, on receiving the Hollywood Walk of Fame on Valentine's Day, Wednesday, February 14, 2001, and does extend our gratitude for sharing their caring heart and rock-solid advice with millions of people around the world." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to have true confessions. Who else reads Dear Abby? All right. You've got a lot of fans here. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. During the 45 years that Dear Abby has been in existence, we have received many awards. The attention is gratifying. But none of those honors comes close to this one. Nothing can touch the thrill of being recognized by the folks in your own hometown. We love this city and feel privileged to call Los Angeles our home. You can be sure this award will be displayed in a place of honor. There's a saying that if you want a place in the sun, you have to put up with a few blisters. Well, today, there are no blisters, only bliss. My mother and I are proud to share the pen name Dear Abby, never prouder than today. And thank you all.
Thank you, and congratulations on the sidewalk. All right, Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla for an introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. Kids, can you all stand up? Colleagues, I want to introduce some visitors to City Hall today. Several classes of third graders from El Dorado Elementary in Silmar, in my district. If all the kids can wave. Welcome to City Hall, and you're on the TV net right now. So if you have cable, you can go home tonight and watch Channel 35 and see yourselves on TV. Thank you for being with us.
And then you can see yourselves again on Sunday. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for coming. All right, we're now going to go through the agenda.
First item, Madam President, is approval of the minutes.
All right, without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number four, request from Council District 13 to continue that item to Friday of February 23rd.
I'm sorry, I got caught up there.
I'm sorry. Item number four, request to continue that item to February 23rd.
All right, item four is continued.
And item 36H, the city attorney has requested that item be continued to Tuesday, February 27th.
All right, item 36H is continued, but please note A through G are still on the agenda.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is a street lighting distance, district confirmation of assessment, and there's an ordinance. We will have 12 for a short time, so do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We don't have 12 right now, though, so let's hold that on the desk.
Okay, item number, there was a request also to take item number three.
Item number three, yes. Now, we do have, Mr. Bernsen, we now have a lot of people who want to be heard on item number three. So, we're going to, this will be item three on the agenda, and as there has not yet been a public hearing, you will, all within reason, get a chance to have a public hearing here to be heard. And then we'll take it up. So, in order, only in the order of the cards I have, Richard Burzback, followed by Greg Taylor, Gary Levitt, Maureen Levitt, and Jeanne Plumb. Mr. Burzback. And if the rest of you would sort of get yourselves in gear to move up when he finishes, that would be helpful. Go ahead.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
... moment, elections are coming up. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at as close to 10:00 as we can get a quorum. We're being viewed on Channel 35 and also available by council phone, an email, and just about everything else imaginable. So, let's begin by calling the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Hernandez, Holder, Miskowski, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Sweeney, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members of Crescent in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Before we begin the agenda, we're going to recognize Mr. Hernandez for presentation.
Madam President, members of the council, before I make my presentation, I've got a few confessions I want to make. That's dangerous. But last night, I had the -- after I read my horoscope in the L.A. Times, and I usually go to the living section of the Times every day, I took the time to read a column of Dear Abby. And what the column was talking about was, it was a response letter as to a mother that was requiring that her daughter get a nice big diamond as to show a commitment from a suitor for marriage. And basically, Dear Abby had said that that shouldn't be the goal. The goal should be that the suitor should be the jewel. And most of the response agreed with her. But in reading the article, what happened is, it reminded me of when I was 18, wanted to get married, and my laws wouldn't allow me to do that. They basically felt that we should buy a house, and we should graduate from school, and have jobs before we chose to do that. And we worked on that. But the way I got my wedding ring is, I asked my boss to make me a loan. Because I was just into escrow, I was just graduating from college, and I'd just got this job. But I wanted to marry my wife, and bottom line is, he made me that loan, I bought the rings, I paid them back right away. And years later, I got her the biggest diamond she ever wanted on that ring. But it reminded me of that story, I went through those thoughts, and they were fun, they were good thoughts for me. Because my wife and I are getting ready to celebrate 28 years of marriage.
Congratulations.
And so today, what I have before me is Dear Abby. Not the original one. You see, Dear Abby is an acknowledged phenomenon of contemporary journalism. With a daily readership of more than 95 million, the column has devoted following who wouldn't dream of starting their day without first reading Dear Abby. It began in 1956 by Pauline Phillips, a 37-year-old newcomer to the San Francisco area. She impulsively phoned the editor of the San Francisco Chronicle and told them she could write a better advice column than the one she had been reading in his newspaper. To her surprise, he asked her to come in for an interview. She introduced herself as an average, middle-aged housewife, who had been happily married to the same man for 17 years, and they had reared two loving teenage children. The editor asked Pauline to write sample replies to some of the previously published columns. She did, and the rest is history. When her secretaries were swamped by the onslaught, she recruited her 14-year-old daughter, Jeanne, Jeanne, who under her mother's watchful eye, earned her allowance for responding to mail from teenagers. In 1963, Dear Abby branched into radio with a nationally syndicated show on CBS Network, and more than half of the shows were co-written by her daughter Jeanne. Attesting to its enduring popularity, Dear Abby Show also aired for 12 years. In 1980, Jeanne became Dear Abby's executive director. Pauline Phillips was going to be here today, but her health basically asked her to stay home. And she's, I guess, in her mid-80s?
She'll be 83 in July.
83 in July. And Jeanne, who is the executive director, has been so much a part of this column that when they're recognized, we basically recognize Dear Abby as Pauline Phillips and Jeanne Phillips, and Jeanne Phillips is with me now. From a 14-year-old to following her mother's footsteps, to the kind of following they have. So, what I have before me is a resolution that is signed by the entire city council, which is rare, and also the mayor, which is even rarer, all in agreement that Dear Abby should be acknowledged as one of our country's icons, as someone who basically is making a difference on people's lives. And so, I'll read just the "therefore." And it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the council of the City of Los Angeles does hereby congratulate Pauline and Jeanne Phillips, also known as Dear Abby, on receiving the Hollywood Walk of Fame on Valentine's Day, Wednesday, February 14, 2001, and does extend our gratitude for sharing their caring heart and rock-solid advice with millions of people around the world." Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we're going to have true confessions. Who else reads Dear Abby? All right. You've got a lot of fans here. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. During the 45 years that Dear Abby has been in existence, we have received many awards. The attention is gratifying, but none of those honors comes close to this one. Nothing can touch the thrill of being recognized by the folks in your own hometown. We love this city and feel privileged to call Los Angeles our home. You can be sure this award will be displayed in a place of honor. There's a saying that if you want a place in the sun, you have to put up with a few blisters. Well, today, there are no blisters, only bliss. My mother and I are proud to share the pen name Dear Abby, never prouder than today. And thank you all.
Thank you. And congratulations on the sidewalk. All right, Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla for an introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. Kids, can you all stand up? Colleagues, I want to introduce some visitors to City Hall today. Several classes of third graders from El Dorado Elementary in Silmar, in my district. If all the kids can wave. Welcome to City Hall, and you're on the TV net right now. So if you have cable, you can go home tonight and watch Channel 35 and see yourselves on TV. Thank you for being with us.
And then you can see yourselves again on Sunday. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for coming. All right, we're now going to go through the agenda.
First item, Madam President, is approval of the minutes.
All right, without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number four, request from Council District 13 to continue that item to Friday of February 23rd.
I'm sorry, I got caught up there.
I'm sorry. Item number four, request to continue that item to February 23rd.
All right, item four is continued.
And item 36H, the city attorney has requested that item be continued to Tuesday, February 27th.
All right, item 36H is continued, but please note A through G are still on the agenda.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is a street lighting distance, district confirmation of assessment, and there's an ordinance. We will have 12 for a short time, so do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We don't have 12 right now, though, so let's hold that on the desk.
Okay, item number, there was a request also to take item number three.
Item number three, yes. Now, we do have, Mr. Bernson, we now have a lot of people who want to be heard on item number three. So, we're gonna, this will be item three on the agenda, and as there has not yet been a public hearing, you will, all within reason, get a chance to have a public hearing here to be heard. And then we'll take it up. So, in order, only in the order of the cards I have, Richard Burzback, followed by Greg Taylor, Gary Levitt, Maureen Levitt, and Jeanne Plumb. Mr. Burzback. And if the rest of you would sort of get yourselves in gear to move up when he finishes, that would be helpful. Go ahead.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Richard Burzback. I live at 10817 Independence Avenue in Chatsworth, fairly close to the school in question. We should be totally opposed to any increase in student population at the private school noted at Sierra Canyon. No conditional use permit should be considered when it is known that the current holder of a permit is currently in violation. Isn't it plain to see that even considering an increase or additional permit creates a system that encourages violations? Our city should not allow it. By any measure, this hearing for increased use of Sierra Canyon School is ambiguous. It doesn't mean anything. The school has shown that, has known that they were exceeding in student population. What does this mean? They took in students anyway. They should have been cited immediately at 541. Now they are at or beyond 700 students. Who knows? Why does our city create a standard they will not enforce? The conditional use permit that they are now operating under is not being adhered to, and it has not been adhered to in the past. The new increased use will not be adhered to. The city doesn't police it, they expect the neighbors to police it. There are no regular checks that the city does that effectively police each one of the conditions on the permits that they issue. The facts are that they're clearly in violation of their conditional use permit, they will continue to do so. What right does anybody have to allow this increase in conditional use in our neighborhood, create terms and conditions that are supposed to be adhered to, and dump it on our neighborhood to police it? It's my understanding that my councilman is opposed to removing students from the overpopulated school. Has he looked at the percentage of students at this school from outside his council district? Is he representing them? I have asked the school what percentage this was, and I was told by one gentleman, about 25% to 33% come from outside of the council district. I wonder how many students come from outside of L.A. County? The school acts with arrogance towards the neighborhood, the city, the city council, and the zoning administrator by knowingly exceeding and not adhering to the conditions they agreed to. Even if they shall lose their license to operate if they're over 700, and they swear on an affidavit their student enrollment, who is checking? Does their prior record indicate that they are trustworthy? With no real effective enforcement of the permit, the permit and this process mean nothing. If the city council approves--
Could I ask you to wind up, please? Because I want to let the other people hear it as well.
If the city council approves any expanded use of this school, you'll be putting your stamp of approval on permit holders knowingly violating conditions that the city approves in all their permits that the city issues. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Greg Taylor, to be followed by Gary Levitt.
Thank you, President Galanter, members of the council. My name is Greg Taylor. I represent Sierra Canyon School. I'll be very brief, because it's, we've been three and a half years getting to this point, and I think the result of that is summarized in what your committee is recommending to the council, which the school agrees with those conditions. There are a lot of new traffic mitigation conditions. There are conditions having to do with events on the school, and the number of students, and an absolute cap on the number of students with affidavits to be filed each semester and during the summer camp, indicating the exact number of students that are there that semester or for the camp, as a way of controlling this through the council office and the zoning administrator's office. I would like to point out just a couple of things. Sierra Canyon School is an award-winning school. They're the only K through 8 private school in the San Fernando Valley to be recognized by the United States Department of Education as a national distinguished school for excellence. The campus is beautifully maintained, it's like a park. The school is very community-minded, they participate and support major community groups, and have for years, and it's not just a part of trying to go for a new conditional use permit. It is what the school is and what the school does. I won't go through the conditions that have been worked out.
You were going to be brief.
I am. And so basically, we agree with the committee report. I just had a chance finally to look at it, and it seems to be intact. As the committee discussed, there were, so a lot of changes made there. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Levitt, followed by Maureen Levitt, and then Jeanne Plumb.
Hello, my name is Gary Levitt. I live at 10946 Independence Avenue, Chatsworth. I live diagonally across from Sierra Canyon School. And let me start off by saying that, as a neighbor, there is obviously no issue with the quality of school. I look at it from the standpoint of the congestion in the area. Looking at the situation, and this is my apprehension, first of all, I want to commend the Plumb Committee for trying to be as even-handed as possible, and trying to address both the concerns of the school and of the neighborhood. But again, being a neighbor and being that close to the school, my concerns are with respect to the traffic. And in particular, I appreciate Councilman Bernson's remarks of, if there are any students above 700, that that would be the end of the school. And being a computer-type, I can relate to that because I'm used to binary solutions. Unfortunately, in the real world and dealing with humans, binary solutions don't necessarily work. And for example, the school, as was mentioned before, has in the past violated their use permits by over-enrollment. And I'm hard-pressed, as has been the case in the past, we do not want to throw children out of the school. And my concerns are that this argument will hold true in the future. And likewise, I don't want to throw children out of the school, but the traffic is a serious concern. And as has been demonstrated recently, even with some of the proactive work by the owners, is it's still an issue for us in the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Levitt, followed by Jeanne Plumb.
Hi, I'm Maureen Levitt. I live at 10946 Independence Avenue.
We're not picking you up on the mic. Pull it up close to your mouth. There you go.
Okay. There were a few conditions that I've noted, of my appeal, that were not addressed, and I just wanted to note that some of the things that, on condition 15J2B, we brought up and talked with the school about the construction being restricted to the hours of 7:00, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., just Monday through Friday, and not on Saturdays. Because it is a horsekeeping community, it was felt that it was a danger to the young and the children that ride on the weekends. They're not as experienced, having heavy equipment operating on a Saturday would not be a good thing. And that has not been addressed. Also, that on condition 15E, the outdoor lighting, it's, shall be designated and installed with shielding, so it's now outside adjacent properties won't see the light source. But also that the playing fields shall not be lit except for low-level security lighting. And the school, at their community meeting, mentioned that they would not be lighting these fields. We would just like it written in so that it's understood. And on condition 13B, the carpooling, it says a minimum of two students, and I believe the new one says an average of two students. If it's an average of two students, that means you're going to have, people can come in with 111, and then you have somebody that comes in with three that makes up for the other two. I think it should be a minimum of two students, otherwise, you're not carpooling. And the other thing I noticed in here, the access routes, the new one written up for transportation and circulation, 13C, mentions the unpaved roads. It says, "All delivery vehicles shall be instructed not to use the unpaved roads located to the south of Rinaldi." And Independence Avenue is paved for three houses, but it's very narrow. And I wanted to have it clarified in here, that they are not to use Independence south of Rinaldi. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne Plumb.
Jeanne Plumb, resident of the area. I'd like to specifically address the conditions of approval. In general, the conditions presented to us by Mr. White this morning are satisfactory. I would like to particularly bring to the attention that Exhibit A of the new plot plan with the adopted dedicated horse trail be constructed prior to the beginning of construction. I believe our councilman was very sympathetic about that, and does not want the equestrian traffic interrupted. Secondly, we appreciate retaining number 12, the 32-square-foot sign. The request for a larger sign is inappropriate, and we agree with the conditions. Most important, and this can address our neighborhood concerns about traffic, that the recommendation of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee be adopted, and that is, that the Department of Transportation study our traffic problems, not the private engineer hired by the school, and that the Planning and Land Use Committee have a public hearing when these concerns are ready to be formalized. The neighborhood would certainly appreciate having a chance to look at the traffic mitigation measures that affect our neighborhood. I appreciate the time that the Plumb Committee, especially Councilwoman Miskowski and Councilman Hernandez, took in understanding the problems of this school and its expected expansion. Our councilman has been sympathetic and very alert in addressing our concerns, and we request that the adoptions and conditions of approval before you be granted in their firm and in their completeness. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and the Chair recognizes Mr. Bernson.
Yes, members of the council and members of the community came out today. I want to thank you for your interest and for the input that you've given us. We've done our best to try to deal with a difficult situation. Essentially, we have a school that went over their allotted number that was given on their conditional use permit, which is not entirely unusual in this city, but it's something we don't want to happen. Now, we addressed this the best way we could. We did not feel it would be acceptable to have the school remove a number of students, approximately 160 students, I believe. So, this is what we have done. We've put a cap of 700 on there, but we're trying something different this time. You say that there's no enforcement? Well, we will give you the same type of enforcement that the State Board of Equalization does on tax returns. They will submit, they will submit a statement to the, at the beginning of each semester, to the Building and Safety Department and the Planning Department that stipulates, under penalty of perjury, that they do not exceed 700 students. So I think that does put some teeth into a figure that has, in the past, been, shall we say, adjusted by many schools throughout our area. So we're trying something new, and I think it's going to work. You know, we've been very concerned about this area. It's essentially, the neighborhood is a horsekeeping area surrounding it. We have ensured that Rinaldi does not extend west of De Soto. In fact, we've made sure that Rinaldi did not extend all the way to Topanga Canyon, which would have created a superhighway through there and through a residential and horsekeeping community. We think this, that the conditions that we've put in, including the lighting, the sound, and other things, will protect the community. We've ensured the rights of the horsekeepers as far as the trail system is concerned. And we're going to go one step further, even though it isn't in the terms of these approvals, because it's not something in the terms of this. But we're going to look at all of the streets in there, and certain streets are going to be restricted as far as turns are concerned during certain hours when school goes in and when school lets out. So I think that we, I think that the situation will improve over what it has been, and obviously, we don't want trucks, and we don't want a lot of vehicles going down streets that are narrow, partially unpaved. And we want them to stay on the major streets, such as Canoga Avenue, and to access that way. So I think that what we have here is a compromise that will enable the school to continue its excellent work. And I might add, this school is one of the most respected and highly regarded schools in the country. And it will also protect the community and make sure that there's no further intrusion as far as numbers of students, and that the conditions that have occurred with those students will improve in the future, because we're going to make sure that the situations as far as carpooling are concerned, as far as the other types of things that have been put in, will alleviate that. I just want to add one more condition, I'm going to do this orally, and that is, that the carpool monitor that they have, they've created a carpool monitor, we would like a monthly report made to the Building and Safety Department that stipulates that the number of average students in the carpools must be at least two. And we recognize, and the reason we say the average is because there may be a day when one of the students is ill, and somebody pulls up with a student, one, with one, a car with one student, and we start getting calls. But we would like that statement, and I believe you'll agree to that. Is that correct? Yes, they're nodding yes. Okay, with that, I would urge an eye vote of the committee report.
All right. There being no other speakers, open the roll on item three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that's approved with the--
Fourth with, yeah.
--additional condition, forthwith on that.
Thank you.
Now, we have, item four's been continued. Items one and two are also before us, and we have no cards, so the public hearings on those are now closed. Do we have any specials, one or two? Open the roll on one and two. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those who approved in the ordinance on item one will go over one week. How did we lose somebody so fast? Okay. Okay, that brings us to--
Items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 14. There's a request from Councilmember Padilla's office to hold item 13 for his--
Return?
--presence, yes.
Okay. He's promised to come back. All right, so we'll hold item 13 on the desk, and item 14 has a card, so we'll call that special. Members of the council, any other seven? Ms. Chick calls item seven special. Mr. Ridley Thomas calls item six special.
Mr. Hernandez calls item eight.
Ms. Miskowski called item 12. Hold on, Mike?
Item eight.
Item eight. Mr. Hernandez calls item eight.
[inaudible]
Yeah, hang on. Well, yeah, does anybody want five, nine, 10, 11?
All of you vote.
Yeah. Right. Okay, open the roll on items five, nine, 10, and 11. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, next.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 15 through 35.
All right, I do not have cards on any of those items, so the public hearings are now closed on items 15 through 35. Members of the council, any specials? 15 through 35, going once, going twice. All right, open the roll on items 15 through 35. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. The ordinances on 15, 16, and 17 will go over one week. And that takes us back to, the next ones are closed sessions, so let's go back to the specials. And we start with item six. Mr. Ridley Thomas, you called item six special. Please push the speaker button. Can you push the button, please? Thank you.
I'd be glad to.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number six deals with the Ad-Hoc Committee on Improvement to Police Policies and Practices. I wanted to take this opportunity to once again indicate that there are several key items in this committee that the committee is attempting to deal with. And it would strike me as being basically important for the council itself to continually take note of those items, because if in fact we treat these as routine, if we reduce reform to that which is pedestrian, I'm afraid, Madam President, members of the council, we will find ourselves faced with a whole new set of problems in the very near term. Once again, the issue of the consent decree is at stake here. The role of-- The role of the Inspector General's office to implement provisions of the consent decree, we cannot convince anyone, I would even say even ourselves, that we are serious about improving the quality of police services to the citizenry of Los Angeles if we don't move the staffing, the equipment, and the other related resources to make it happen. And so I want to suggest that this is one more example of whether or not we are really serious about implementation of lasting reforms in our city to ensure our citizens, residents generally speaking, that the things that have happened, we will work very hard to prevent from happening, and we have to do it by correcting in the most fundamental way some of the problems in the police department. Now, I've taken this opportunity to pass, Madam President, to make sure that the message is sent to the mayor, that we will not relent. This is yet another example.
Thank you. Mr. Savornic.
And while I conclude my remarks...
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. One of the questions that I do have is that there was a motion that I believe was also sent to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Improvement to Police Practices in regards to an estimate of what our ongoing costs were going to be. And I was wondering whether or not that was going to be forthcoming and/or if we have staff present that can give us some type of an estimate on what those numbers are going to be over the short term and over the long term. One of the other things in listening to the debate on this issue for the last couple of months also is that we don't have a time certain in regards to how long we are going to be entering into this decree. I'm sure that it's for a period of time to be determined, and maybe it's even articulated in the decree that I missed. And so one of the things that I would like to hear is, for how long of a period are we entered into this decree for, because I possibly have missed it? And what are we looking at, and what are we planning for in regards to contingencies to meet these budget requests for this issue? And if I could have that question answered, I would appreciate it. My staff.
Well, possibly our next speaker can answer it for you, and if not, you'll ask again. Ms. Miskowski, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to at least partially answer that question for Mr. Savornic. And the reason it's partial at this point is because we are still getting other parts of the package. The initial request on sort of a response to the Rampart inquiry from the police department was submitted back, I believe, last November, and we've been working on it, the mayor's been working on it, the police commission's been working on it, and the department whittling down the initial estimate, both for that and then folding into it the consent decree. This request is essentially interim, and it isn't even yet the full response. We were supposed to have had a meeting of the police commission Tuesday, which was going to look at the rest of the budget items, and they canceled their meeting, so we are still putting that together. But initially, the council might remember that I think when we were first looking at the response, we've set aside some $6 million in our current year budget to start responding, and we still have, with this approval today, which is a $1.2 million package, $900,000 remaining in that first initial response. And some of these things that are in here, I know we just talk about it as a budget request to implement the consent decree, but those are just words, they're somewhat sort of blank. I'd like to talk about what is in here. There are positions authorized for Teams 2, which we've all recognized is an important system that must be in place, was supposed to have been in place way before we got into any of this. There are positions for the Categorical Use of Force Investigation Unit. There is a position and funding for the Internal Affairs 24-Hour Hotline. There is some material for the conducting of categorical use of force investigations with taped recording of interviews, et cetera. A computerized informant tracking system, an informant manual, and other supervisory training. As Mr. Ridley-Thomas indicated, five of the positions in here are for the Inspector General. And in fact, I would like to make a technical correction on item two of this measure, which says that there's an employment authority for a management analyst positioned for the police department. That's actually for the police commission. So if I can have that incorporated as a correction to the report. But, Mr. Savornic, as soon as we get all of the budget requests accounted for and looking to see what we are going to be bringing forward, your motion will be wrapped into that to give you not only what we have done, but what we look to forecast. And I think it would probably be useful to tie in the cost of what we are doing, which had been predicted and projected, and what we were doing on the Rampart settlements, on the court cases. I think bringing all of that in as a real picture on the Rampart costs and/or consent decree is appropriate, and we will be doing that. But so, at best, right now, we can just give you the partial answer.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Savornic, just for what it's worth, the term of the consent decree is a five-year term. It could expire sooner on joint agreement of the parties. It could expire later if the city fails to comply with what we've promised to do. So that's the deal. With regard to the issue before us, I think Mr. Ridley-Thomas said something very important, and that is, we can't simply treat these matters as routine. The consent decree has to be dealt with as something of very high significance every time these issues are before us. Now, with regard to part of what Mr. Savornic had suggested, which is that the costs of the consent decree are ultimately going to be significant. It's true. But let's discuss the items that the consent decree requires us to do, not as extra items that but for the consent decree we shouldn't be doing, but instead, as items that we absolutely should be focusing on irrespective of whether there's a mandate or not. Let's talk about some examples, including some things that are present in the item before us this morning. The Inspector General has been dramatically understaffed for far too long. It's time for that to change. I made an inquiry of the Inspector General a year and a half ago, asking for a list of precisely the staffing it needs to do its job well. That request got held up for a long time. Giving the police commission the staffing it needs to be effective civilian overseers of the police department, assuring our investigations of use of force are appropriate, assuring that complaints are handled properly, making sure that Teams 2, a very expensive computer system, works as a management tool for the police department. Because the bottom line for all of us has to be this: Right now, safety in the city is jeopardized for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is the fact that the taint of Rampart is over all our department. And that taint has made it more difficult for us to hire new police officers, which makes our city a more dangerous place. Reform and public safety are not mutually exclusive. Reform is fundamentally necessary to assure we have a safe city. The consent decree ought to be viewed in this light as requiring us to take steps and to allocate funds to support civilian oversight and reform in the department that we should be doing anyway.
Round two. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, not only is reform necessary for the health of the city, it's necessary for the health of the city's budget. It is at this point that I think all of us understand that the matters of misconduct, the matters of abuse, the matters of corruption, as they have been alleged, and to a large degree, more than what we'd like to publicly acknowledge, been evidenced and/or confirmed, we now have to recognize that the police department is very costly to operate as it currently does business. So we have to correct it for the good of libraries, for the good of streets being properly paid, for the good of wrecked park services, for the good of information technology, all those things that we say are important to the health and well-being of the city. And I wish to suggest that it cannot be the case that the council itself, or the council alone, is articulating what is desirable and yet necessary by way of an improved police department with respect to practices and policies. I believe it is the responsibility of the police commission to do so as well. And there is some concern, a noticeable reduction in consideration given to this very important policy issue and a set of priorities. And so let this then be a reminder, and, Madam President, members of the council, and Madam Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee, it might be necessary, Ms. Miskowski, for us to extend an invitation to the police commission and ask them what it is that they are doing in concert with us to move this reform agenda forward. I would not like to think that they are attending to other matters, and we are dealing with this rather weighty set of issues that need to be concerned, our collective concern. So, Madam President, if the chair of the committee deems appropriate, I would so move.
All right, Mr. Savornic.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. One of the concerns that I would like to articulate is that, looking into this first request for money and personnel, the report states that approximately, in fact, it's probably an exact number, that we are going to be assigning 10 officers to this task. And my question is, is that where are these officers coming from? I know that our recruitment is down, and I most certainly, in wanting to see the majority of this council's will carried out, I most certainly would not want it to be done at the expense of safety in our neighborhoods. According to the report, we are going to unfreeze six police officer, two positions, assign a police captain, three, a police sergeant, two, a police detective, three, a police lieutenant, two, with the action today to this process. And I would like to hear from the department of where these individuals are coming from, where are they being reassigned from to do this? Because I think it's important that while, to the majority of this council, the consent decree is a much-needed reform, this council also articulated a few months ago an issue that we all agreed on, which was putting the senior lead officers back on the street. And the police commission isn't doing anything about that either. And so as we move to reform the department and continue to make our neighborhoods safe, I think there are some things in which we can be in agreement. But I really do have a problem with our hiring and our attrition continuing, our hiring continuing to be low and our attrition continuing to be high, the amount of officers that we're going to be assigning to this process, and I hope it's not happening at the expense of neighborhood safety. And I would like to hear some reassurances prior to our voting on this today, to see indeed where these officers coming from, and what our plan is to where the officers in the future to implement the decree are going to be coming from.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hernandez. Do you want to respond to that before I call? Mr. Hernandez, where are the officers coming from?
Yes, ma'am. Jerry Greenwald, Office of Ministry of Research. We've been assured by the police department that the officers to fill these positions will be taken out of other non-p patrol-related activities in the department. So the patrol activities within the communities will not be impacted.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
One, Madam Chair, members of council, I have no problem with approving this interim package, and I think that we have to move as fast as possible. The question I have is, I noticed some of the authority and the funding is from March 1st to June 30th. Are we going to have these people in place March 1st?
I believe the department has been interviewing and doing some pre-planning on filling the positions so that they would be filled as soon after March 1st as possible. I don't think they can guarantee all of them will be full on March 1st, though.
And I ask that question because we approve a lot, we go through a process here in the council where we appropriate, we create positions, and then by the time they're hired, it's usually after the fact. And here, we're talking about an interim process, at least three months, and then we're asking the mayor to continue with the funding in the next fiscal year budget. So one, I want to vote for this, but I'd really like to have some kind of report-back mechanism as to how we're doing on our timeframes. I just want to see it happen, and I want to see it happen as fast as possible. And I want to understand why it's not happening as fast as it could, understanding that we have complicated processes to put people in positions. So I just would ask that the Ad-Hoc Committee be appraised on a monthly basis as to the progress. Today's February 21st, March 1st is, I guess, nine days away. And so to me, we might be voting on that action, but the bottom line is it probably won't happen for a few more weeks.
Let us hope you're wrong on the last part.
We will provide that report to the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you. I appreciate the council's attention to this, and in fact, I think that's why the Ad-Hoc Committee is meeting every two weeks, so that the items, the concerns, and the issues stay on the front burner of our agenda and that we can get response. Mr. Savornic asked a legitimate question about where these officers coming from. There is an interesting report that I just got, actually a draft report from the police department, and this is an interesting title. It's called Harvested Police Officers Returned to Patrol Functions. And it's talking about all the different places that officers are coming from who were non-p patrol to go into patrol, given the issues of recruitment and retention. And I hope that as soon as this is not a draft report and comes through the police commission, that we can bring it into Public Safety Committee and then to council, so the council can become aware of where these officers are coming from, how they are managing to maintain patrol as the high priority in its most complete sense. But what, as a consequence, may not be able to be filled, some special units that, in some areas, council members have sought, have been able to be created as we had higher levels of employment and recruitment in the department. But I think that the council needs to see this. It needs to get a report on the senior lead officers. I understand that just yesterday, there was a meet-and-confer meeting between the department and the Police Protective League on how the senior leads will be brought back, but we need to really light a fire under that and make it happen much sooner, because the council asked for it, and the commission instructed that it be done, you know, some time ago. But those issues are all issues that are important for the whole council to know, and I will bring them through either Public Safety Committee or the Ad-Hoc Committee on Practices and Implementation as soon as possible.
Thank you. I think we're ready. Open the roll on item six. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Ten ayes, one no. There's not 12 people.
Ten ayes, one no.
Okay, that's approved. Anyway. All right, I've had a request to take item 12 next. I don't think you need to do that as a motion. I think you just talk to Cindy, and she just does it. Let's do item 12. Item 12 called special by Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I invited our fire chief, Bematri, down to talk about this issue. This is another realm of our public safety function and report, and particularly dealing with the issue of paramedics and what had been a paramedic vacancy that this council reacted to, but that was the short term. The long term is a master plan for providing emergency services that, in fact, as Mr. Ridley-Thomas had suggested in the earlier item, and that is a working together of the council committee and the police commission. That's exactly what happened in the fire department. There was a special task force created of the commission members with the mayor's staff, and on which I sat as public safety chair, to really listen to our employees, listen to our members of the public, listen to various proposals, and then craft that into working with the department and its management, a long-range emergency service plan for the city. And the chief is here to tell you some of its details. So I'd like to ask the chief to talk to us.
Thank you, council member. I just didn't want to let this issue go by without taking the opportunity to express my appreciation for the continued support of the council in supporting us for these initiatives. So I'm happy to report that based on the hiring that we've done, the authority that the council has given us for the emergency hire paramedics, we currently have the second class of 50... class of 50 out in the field now. They're doing their third-person ride-along. They'll be doing that for the next three weeks. They'll be coming out March 11th. At that time, they'll be assigned out to additional ambulances. Based on the two classes, we were able to upgrade four basic life-support ambulances to paramedic ambulances, so we've got four additional paramedic ambulances now out in the field. Since the beginning of this month, we've not had to assign hire any of our members. The assigned hire is when we have a vacancy and nobody willing to work overtime, we have to assign hire. We haven't had to do that anymore. We're confident now that we're past that for the long-term foreseeable future, which is a tremendous boon to the morale of our people, as Councilmember Miesakowski saw in the committee meetings that we were having. In addition to the paramedics that we've hired, we've got one final class of 50. We'll be coming back to you probably in about a week or two for the authority to hire those. We've already appropriated the money to support that. Additionally, tonight, I've got an orientation for a class of 50 new firefighters. So, about a month from now, in mid-March is when the next two classes come out to the field. That will start to put us just about even on our staffing, which has had a tremendous impact on the morale of our members, as well as the response times out in the community. That coupled with the new MOU that you voted on last week, has gone a long way to solving the staffing problems that have plagued us really for a number of years. That's all the good side of it, and the support today for the EMS plan that the Commission put together and sent forward, which will be incorporated into our master plan and be brought back to you in a very comprehensive way, which takes into account the bond measure that passed in this past election. Everything is falling into place, and things are coming together very well. The next goal in this next fiscal year is the paramedic resource in every fire station, which in the preliminary mayor's budget, they have funded us for that. And then, the follow-up to that will be an ambulance in every fire station, and that is one area that we're still working with the mayor's people on, and we'll be talking to you as a council as that budget comes forward on staffing those, giving us money for the additional ambulances now that we have the staffing. So, everything is very positive, and I just wanted to bring that back to you, because oftentimes, we're only here for the negative things, and things are going very well in the Fire Department, and it's being reflected in the service that we're providing out to your constituents. So, I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and we are now ready to, now, actually, all we're going to do with this report as an anticlimax is note and file it. But open the roll on item 12, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that's approved, noted and filed, and that takes us back, I believe, to item seven. Let me just, before we start on item seven, members of the council, we are at eleven members, and I have two members who have noted that they intend to leave early, but they can't both do that unless we get this meeting rolling along. We still have item seven, eight, thirteen, fourteen, and thirty-six A through G, and thirty-seven. So, let us now go to item seven, called Special Bye, Ms. Chik. And could you hit the speaker button, please? Can you push the speaker thing? Thank you. Go.
Thank you, Madam President. There are two items of concern to me that relate to this agenda item in terms of interim budget allocations. One is based on a letter I received from one of our very successful community-based organizations that's engaged in graffiti removal, and as all of you know from another recent report, we have a radical increase in graffiti vandalism throughout the city. We are looking at increasing the resources that Operation Clean Sweep receives for next year to address this serious problem. But this letter talks about the fact that there were at least some of our community-based organizations that were asked to increase their activities above and beyond their normal efforts during the Democratic National Convention. And this letter talks about they were required to maintain all commercial streets within their areas as zero tolerance, plus work overtime, plus be on 24-hour call. This particular organization tried to get reimbursement for this extra work to the tune of $10,000, and they were turned down. So, colleagues, I'm raising the issue that we cannot have contracted community-based organizations, ask them to do more work, and then not reimburse them. And unfortunately, the head of Operation Clean Sweep is not available at this time to address us. I am going to look to hear from our ORS staff, but I would like to make a motion to send the substance of the issue to Public Works Committee, and then to Budget and Finance in very short order, to find out were there other community-based organizations during that period that incurred these extra costs, and if so, to reimburse them. If it's just this one of $10,000, to reimburse them. We cannot be asking them to do more work when we owe them money for work already done. Two, I don't know if others of us face the same problem I do, but periodically, my office turns to the Bureau of Sanitation to engage with other departments and agencies in my district to do special community cleanups, to target areas that have debris, abandoned sofas, et cetera, that need to be removed by the Bureau of Sanitation. We have recently been informed by the Bureau of Sanitation that the overtime needed for the efforts that I've requested, $300, not a lot of money, colleagues, cannot be given to me, because all of Bureau of San's overtime is being used by the Healthy Neighborhoods programs, and that different council offices, and several of you were specifically named to me by Mr. Soans in Bureau of San, are preparing motions that you will be introducing, asking for your council office budget money to be transferred to Bureau of San, so that they can allocate things like $300 worth of overtime to come into our areas in our communities, and I know we have them all over the city, to do these cleanups. Again, I would like to move that this problem go to Public Works Committee and then to Budget and Finance.
All right, just let me clarify to make sure. You're not recommending that the whole item go, just the specific, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
To look at what the situation is citywide in terms of, that is unheard of.
Laura, your time's up.
Okay, then I'll push my button again.
All right.
I would like to hear from Mr. Fujioka.
All right, okay, do you know what you're responding to here?
The first issue. As part of this process, we contacted the various departments, bureaus, offices throughout the city, and asked them to identify their needs with respect to the mid-year budget appropriation. The Board of Public Works did not identify this as an issue. Councilwoman Chik has shared this with me, and I think it is a good move to take this offline, to have it go through the Public Works Committee, because we can investigate this and determine if, in fact, we need a separate or additional appropriation to the Board for this program. And with respect to the second issue, we're also unaware of the problems associated with additional overtime to meet the council's needs.
All right, Mr. Padilla, to be followed by Mr. Fuhrer, and then Ms. Chik again.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Chik, for raising that, because we're also experiencing the same problem in my district. You know, we try to either lead or be in partnership with community-based organizations very regularly, every other month, sometimes monthly, with community cleanups. And the last thing we want to hear when we call for a sanitation truck to come out and pick up bulky items is, "We're sorry, we don't have the budget for that." That's absolutely unacceptable. So, for it to be reviewed in the next Public Works Committee is actually encouraging for me, as I sit on that committee. One of the other questions I wanted to ask, however, is related to the ITA. Off and on with new initiatives and new ideas for the last several months, we've been getting conflicting messages back from the Department. "We don't have the money. We're running a deficit." All of a sudden, there is money, and there's a surplus. I look in the report, there's a $1.2 million surplus in just one category. We have vacancy issues in terms of openings and staff in the Department, therefore creating some surpluses in other areas. Can you please elaborate on how we're getting, you know, back and forth or make signals from the Department?
Department's identified about $1,200,000 in surplus salary funds, and another $600,000 in savings and expense funds, with identified deficits of about $800,000 due to a variety of needs, overtime staffing, as-needed salary accounts, some contractual services. This reflects their request to us, and the report includes funding that they have needed.
I understand, and I've seen the report, and that reflects, you know, their report and their status as of the time of submission of this report. But what I'm saying that I have a problem with is that a month previous to that, and a month previous to that, and a month previous to that, the information they were giving was very inconsistent and obviously very inaccurate based on this report in writing. If there's some staff members.
We have a rep in the Department, and I remember the issue with issue came forward.
While they're coming forward, if you can.
Yeah, I remember the issue, whether or not we have sufficient funding for a program that was coming through your committee. I believe we've consistently projected a surplus in a salary account. With respect to the discrepancy, at this point, I think I'd ask the Department to come forward.
Is there somebody here from the Department?
We've already said there's a surplus, Ms. Chik.
You've heard my questions.
No, I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
Well, I want to know, I've seen the report that shows the Department has what I would consider a significant surplus, and in large part, that's due to vacancies in the Department and staff and other factors. My concern is this, a month prior to this report being submitted in writing, and a month before that, and a month before that, as we've been trying to work with the Department on new initiatives, projects, and programs, and not just for my district, this is for citywide needs, I get conflicting reports and conflicting information from the Department saying, "Well, we might have the money for that, there's money here, there's money there," or "We're running a deficit, there's not money for that." How, how does that happen, when obviously, number one, it's inconsistent, number two, much of it is inaccurate, given the final report that we're considering today?
Now, your time's up, so we'll have the answer to the question, and then I'm going to call the next speaker. Go ahead.
The majority of the surplus is in the salary savings, of which all of that is being taken out of our account at this midterm, where we are continually in running problems in the 9350 account, which is our telecommunications account. And we are, at this point, have used up almost our entire year's allocation that we have on projects that have already been submitted by the various departments. So, that account, we will be showing a deficit in that account.
Madam President, just one last quick request, not a question, but I would move, just as we're going to consider the other specific item.
You know, we actually have a committee process, and this is a committee report that's before us, and most of this discussion should have been handled in committee. I mean, I've got, all right, finish, you're over your time.
Request that the ITA component also be considered in ITGS.
All right, Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me give you an overview, colleagues, of where we stand. Bottom lines are these: We have about $50 million in identified problems that were not anticipated when we put the budget together. We're going to fund about half those problems, very round numbers. We're going to defer funding the other half, give or take, a million dollars here or there, until later on in the year, as we're sure that those problems actually materialize. We will probably, because the economy was good for the beginning part of our fiscal year, have about $75 million of revenue that we didn't expect. If you take that $75 million and subtract the 50 of problems, you get 25. It's that 25 that would be in our reserve. We also have a $40 million, $39.8, I think, million-dollar fund, that's a reserve that we only can touch in the event of a major economic or other emergency. So, you add that 39, call it 40, to the 25, and it gets us to 65. The mayor's budget proposed a $66 million reserve. So, bottom line, at the end of the day, if the problems are roughly as ORS estimates them to be, and the revenues are roughly as ORS estimates them to be, our reserve will be roughly what we thought it would be when we began the process, correct?
Yep.
So, what signal does that send to us all? First, it says things are basically under control, because to the extent that we have been holding the line on new discretionary requests for funding, it's enabled us to have money available from the windfall that we've been able to receive for emergencies over which we've had little control. For example, workers' comp costs that none of us expected to be as high as they are. So, the colleagues' message that I want to send from the committee is this: If there are genuine emergencies, I mean, critical emergencies in the city, then a new request should be reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee between now and the end of the fiscal year. But if it's not a genuine emergency, I would strongly recommend that we end the year as we thought we would when we began the year, with a reserve that allows us to enter the next fiscal year with a sound amount of money set aside, actually, ORS wants us to build on that money for next year, that helps our bond ratings. And in helping our bond ratings, the cost of borrowing that the city has to pay is reduced, which means for our taxpayers, we can fund more city services and not expend precious taxpayer dollars paying interest on money. I'd like to know, Ms. Fujioka, Mr. Hart, more or less, is that a fair summary where we are?
That's an apt, fair summary.
And, Madam Chair, I want to conclude by extending further the invitation that you made at the conclusion of Mr. Padilla's remarks, and that is, of course, always, if colleagues have specific questions on an aspect of a budgetary issue, after it's gone through the policy review, I'll be happy to review them in budget in a timely way. We've always kept to our word in that regard and continue to do so.
Of course, you don't have television in the Budget Committee, but that can be arranged. If that will shorten the council meetings, we'll arrange it.
Or we can watch soap operas while we're doing the budget.
There you go. It is a soap opera. What are you talking about? Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I seek a clarification to the extent that it can be offered, and Ms. Chik, you were making remarks earlier by summary fashion, and then I want to lock into my comments with your permission, Madam President.
Specifically, on the Bureau of San situation, I've been told by the Department that they have absolutely no overtime funds available to work with council offices to do special cleanups in our district, because all of their overtime funds have been taken for the Healthy Neighborhoods programs, that council members need to introduce motions using council money to pay for Bureau of San overtime.
Madam President, we are having a rather significant increase in difficulty with coordination with Operation Healthy Neighborhood to some extent, but the overall concern is how, for the balance of the time this administration is in place, how we will get our work done without having to feel like we have to arm wrestle about issues, whether they be parks, whether they be streets, whatever. It seems to me that there is a very deliberate attempt to not work collaboratively with the respective council districts. Now, this is but another illustration, and I don't think we should have to endure this kind of unnecessary difficulty, grief, as Mr. Savornich would have a son to stand. So, maybe there's a more operational way for us to get over this hump. And in your inevitable wisdom, Madam President, we look to you for sage advice and counsel.
Well, I have two more speakers to think it up during. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I jokingly walked over to Councilmember Chik and Councilmember Ridley Thomas and Savornich and said, you know, apparently, some of us haven't learned that less is more. And I said that jokingly, because what's the budget of the Department of Sanitation, Mr. Fujioka?
I know, just to pick up trash is at least $180 million, because we debate that every year.
And the overtime budget alone has to be in excess of several million dollars.
And when we debated Healthy Neighborhoods, if I remember correctly, our debate is us giving them more money to do this work. It wasn't a question of them having to do the work with less, and so we keep on throwing money at them. And we. And we expect them to do the work. Now, I'm trying to explain that because maybe what we need to do when a department head makes that kind of statement is audit that department, review their expenditures. Maybe they're making decisions to spend money in areas that we don't agree that they should be spending that money, and we should do that. Now, something tells me the more we do that, they won't question our $300 request to work in a neighborhood and clean up that trash, because, because that is their job. That's what they're supposed to do. And when we're calling, we're calling because constituents have asked us to do our job. And we are asking them to do their job, and we deal with the budget on an annual basis. Now, I'm just kind of bringing it up because let's not forget the role of the council when we set that budget, even though we know there's a different role in terms of the mayor's office and department heads. But we cannot pretend that because department heads say they don't have any more overtime money, that they've been spending their money wisely without us knowing. And I'm just bringing it to the attention because, yes, I am spending more of my office holder money in my council district, and I'm trying to disseminate it to community-based organizations to get projects done, but I know I'm not going to be here in 129 days. At the same time, if I can't spend my money, I'm trying to make sure it's used wisely. So I'm trying to explain it because I think that this department denying a $300 request makes no sense at all, and we should find out how they're spending all their money, so that we can get the kind of attention for our constituents that they deserve.
I think that also bolsters the need for the city to have, then the council to have, an Office of Administrative and Research Services that is truly independent, so we can get that kind of information the same time the mayor does. Ms. Chick.
I appreciate all of my colleagues' comments on this. I want to clarify that my intent was absolutely not to be going back to the general fund for more dollars for Bureau of Sanitation, that that is absurd. But to make sure that, you know, all of you, that it's not just the West Valley, the Third Council District that's in this spot, it's all of us. And I know that these special cleanups are something that all of us engage in, in our districts. I think Mr. Hernandez is exactly right on, and I wish I could go right over to Bureau of San and do that audit right this minute, but I fully intend to have them.
Our time is coming.
In lots of ways. I fully intend to have that $300 allocated from the Bureau of San for overtime, and that there's funds sufficient for all of us to have our once-in-a-while requested exactly by communities and constituents. Mr. Hernandez also pointed out, colleagues, an item 30 that has already flown through, where we have okayed $3.7 million for the Bureau of Sanitation from their stormwater pollution abatement and sewer construction and maintenance funds, 3.7 million, to be used to spruce up a building, a new building, that's predominantly warehouse space, but that needs internal work and furniture and a whole bunch of other stuff for office space for Bureau of Sanitation.
Reconsideration.
I would like to move reconsideration of item 30. We've had discussions in this council.
Wait, 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 let's finish item 7 first.
Well, but I'm, I am, all right, I'll say it at the end of my comments. Because that is unbelievable to have a department saying, we can't do the work we're supposed to in your district because the mayor's directing us to do it somewhere else with their multimillion-dollar budget, but they want 3.7 million to make nice new office space, and the money they're asking for is exactly the money that keeps our sewer service charge citywide what it is today, rather than being raised citywide. So I do move for reconsideration on item 30. I ask.
No, I'm going to call on you to do that as soon as we vote on item 7. What do you want to do with item 7?
All right, I'm ready to.
I just want to finish one item at a time.
I'm ready to pass on item, pass item 7, but my motion about sending to Public Works.
Yes, that's fine. I don't, I didn't hear any objections to that, so we'll treat that as a side amendment to item 7. Let's open the roll on item 7. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. I wouldn't go too far, guys, because item 30 is going to come back. Now, I, actually, Mr. Holden had asked earlier to reconsider an item, and then I'm going to.
Madam President, members, as to respect.
Hang on one second, let me just point out, we still have item 8, item 13, item 14, and the closed session.
Reconsider item 12 on yesterday's agenda, and put it on the calendar for next Tuesday.
All right, this is the trucks, everybody, the trucks and the axles.
Right.
Okay. All right, is there any objection to reconsideration? Mr. Savornich, is Mr. Savornich still here?
Because we're going to.
That's okay. Mr. Savornich, the committee chair, all right, you have a problem about it? It all has to do with, Mr. Holden will explain.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with Mr. Holden's request.
Okay, all right. Without objection, item 12 from yesterday's agenda will be, is reconsidered, and we will calendar it for next Tuesday. Brings us to Ms. Chick's motion. Ms. Chick wanted to reconsider item number 30.
I'd like to move reconsideration for 30.
All right, and for the purposes of, just so we have this.
Further discussion and possible delay until, I would say, Tuesday.
All right. Let us first vote on, oops, Mr. Fuhr, you're on the question of whether to reconsider?
Yeah, just a suggestion. The thing that I think raised Ms. Chick's concern, and maybe Mr. Hernandez's as well, is not the idea that the lease should happen, but rather the source of funds.
Yeah, well, I'm a little nervous about it, too.
And the thing I wanted to just mention is this: Yesterday, we had a very significant conversation here about whether we could afford to keep the LA River clean. The Bureau of Sanitation said, among other things, there's no money.
Wait, Mike, excuse me, let me just, I think if we're going to discuss it, we have to first reconsider and consider it.
Well, I want to frame a question, so it's continued with this question in mind.
All right, go ahead.
So the Bureau of Sanitation said the stormwater pollution abatement fund doesn't have money in it, and therefore, this is a very expensive thing for us to do. The money for this lease is to come from that very fund, which will be $37 million short of its opportunity to fund the things we want to clean up the river with. So I just want to say that if we're moving to continue the item until, say, Tuesday, that's a fine thing. With the information coming back, why this funding source in particular is necessary for this purpose, and how it is appropriate for this purpose in light of the shortage of funds for the things it's supposed to do.
All right, but now I have a whole bunch more people who want to be heard on this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we take the vote to reconsider it right now, so that we can.
That's what I was hoping to do, about midway through Mr. Fuhr's thing. Let's first vote on whether to reconsider. Open the roll. A yes vote is to reconsider item 30. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
All right, the item is now reconsidered, and if you can get me my speaker list back up there. I think Ms. Mizakowski was next, but I'm not certain.
I was just going to further frame the question. I think Mr. Fuhr is right. It actually was coming to us without having gone to any committee, not only Information Technology and General Services, but also it hadn't gone to Environmental Quality, which usually oversees the stormwater abatement fund. It hasn't gone to Budget and Finance, so clearly, I'm happy to, as we have now reconsidered it, have it come back on Tuesday, but I think we should send it back to committee and let committee make some recommendations and judgments on it, all of which we're now looking at and questioning.
Which committee did you have in mind?
EQ.
Yeah. Right, well, is it EQ or Public Works here?
It really has resonance with all. EQ and ITGS, if they want to be together, that'd be fine.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to send this to committee.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I did press my button, I wanted to.
It's not, do it again.
I know, I don't know what's going on in the machine.
I don't either, it's not coming up here. Go ahead.
If I could have staff up here a second, in regards to the lease, you can come up. Because what happened, this was on the council agenda last week, and it was going to be approved, the committee had waived consideration, and there was an urgency on the Department of Sanitation's side to sign the lease. I held it up because it was the first time I'd heard they were basically going to be leasing a building in the, basically, Taylor Yard area, brand-new buildings, that we basically had created in the media center, and we had, basically, were encouraging job creation at the local level. And so I was trying to find out why there was where they had decided to put the building. They came into my office, basically said they'd done a citywide search. It was a centralized location for where all their inspectors have to go out. They're operating out of trailers, and they felt that they should, they negotiated a price of 95 cents a square foot, which doesn't mean much, because they also are doing leasehold improvements that have to be calculated as part of that. And I basically was asking for them to give me a SIP code run of employees, because I want to know how many lived in the general vicinity, what kinds of jobs were going to be created if they leased the space. I wasn't concerned about the funding source, and I just want to be upfront about it, and that's what seems to be the question now. But the Department of Sanitation had an urgency, and I'd like them to explain it to everybody at this time.
Yeah, I just want to point out, before you do that, I just want to point out that this, again, is the kind of discussion that ought to be taken care of in committee, which is why we're trying to send it to committee. But if you can give a concise answer, I would be very grateful.
Okay, very briefly, we've had about 100 employees from the Industrial Waste Management Division working in trailers for about 15 years now. Those trailers have become dilapidated. In fact, we've had to close portions of the trailers.
Okay, so the trailers are bad. Fast forward, so.
We also plan to include our Stormwater Management Division, because there's very much similarity in terms of the type of work they do with inspection of industrial facilities, stormwater-type permits, so we felt there would be great efficiencies in having the two groups join together. The location is the centroid of the area that we deal with throughout the city, and we've done some calculations to determine what is the best location in terms of having freeway access and the ability of our inspectors to go out each day out to these various sites throughout the city.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, were you finished?
No, I just, but the urgency as to avoiding the committee structure and everything else, is there a requirement the lease be signed, or you lose it? I know these are all new buildings, and when Ms. Wilson was in my office, she said there was a lot of them there, and there was availability.
There are a lot of them there, and they are various sizes. The one that we were particularly interested in, we did not want to see get taken out by another lease.
But is that, was that your reason for avoiding the committee system?
It was waived, according to this report, it was waived by ITGS, I don't, doesn't appear to have gone to EQ. Mr. Pacheco. And if, I want to apologize if anybody else, the thing went blank for a while, so if anybody else feels a need to be heard before this goes to committee, push the button again. Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I just wanted to ask the department, if we're going to defer on this at this point, if we're not going to vote to approve this today, for a lot of questions being raised, that they consider the Sears redevelopment site in my district, with all due respect to my colleague, Councilman Hernandez, because we have a very convenient location on Soto Olympic that has a million square feet of office space that we're trying to develop, and it's freeway accessible, and I can pretty much help you get a good rate if you need some help.
I used to know somebody influential.
It is, in terms of, you know, hey, I want to save taxpayer funds also, so, you know, if there is an urgent need and we need something that's accessible and freeway-friendly, there you go, Soto Olympic. Sorry, Mike, I just had, the opening was there, right?
No, I don't have a problem.
You guys can fight it out in the hall.
No, and again, the department.
Can we just get, let me, let's just try to get a yes or no answer to Mr. Hernandez's question that had to do with, if we don't act on this today, and it goes to committee and it comes back, and if Mr. Ridley Thomas is prepared to do it quickly, is, all is lost, or all is not lost?
No.
Okay.
I think we'll be okay.
There is a possibility that it could be lost due to the fact that.
Yeah, but that's why it should have gone to committee first.
Correct, correct. Can you explain the possibility, please? There are, there is very, there's a lot of interest in the facility at this time. We have negotiated a pretty fair price for that particular area.
Yeah, but, see, part of the problem we have here also is that the questions have come up about, how come you're using SPAF money for this, for example? And, you know, we use it for street cleaning, we use it for a lot of things that are, there's an argument, at least, about whether that is stormwater pollution debate.
Madam President, if I might, just, so we're clear, there needs to be, as I think there does, a discussion in the Budget Committee about it. We're meeting today, it's not on today's agenda, the substantive committee has to review it first, but I will put it on the next Budget Committee agenda after the Policy Committee reviews it, and do it as soon as next week. We could have it on council week from Friday, from my standpoint.
Okay. Anybody, must you?
Just, as we're referring to committees, I want to make sure ITGS is.
Okay, well, you waived it earlier, according to this.
Well, based on information.
You can have it back. It's now going to three committees, which means we need to try to organize some joint meetings here, and maybe we can speed this up a little bit. All right, so this item will be, having been reconsidered, item 30 is now referred to, sorry about this, guys, EQ, ITGS, and the Budget Committee. And we'll try to get that coordinated and done as quickly as possible. But I think you have a sense of what the questions are going to be, and I know you'll be prepared with all the answers. Okay, that brings us to item 8. 8.
Called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes, Mr. Hernandez, hit the speaker button, and you're on.
Yes, Madam Chair, hopefully, this is not as controversial as the $300 overtime from Department of Sanitation.
I hope.
What I do need is City Attorney's Office to come up a second. Members of the council, basically, if you read item 8, it was dealing with oversight of the Link Banking Community Oversight Board, and who makes the appointments. And if you all remember correctly, Councilmember Goldberg had introduced a motion on November 8 of 2000, where declaring that the Community Oversight Board Advisory Council would be advisory to the city council, and therefore, the council would have a right to participate in the appointment process. As the new charter was reviewed, we did not have that right. Basically, the appointments were to be made by the mayor, because it was to be treated as a commission, and we were basically to confirm those appointments or not confirm those appointments. In order to make it truly advisory to the council, the city attorney appealed that we should basically remove the regulatory role of the board, and allow for the Treasury's Office to fulfill the duties and terms of regulation, and the advisory council then continue to advise the city council, and we would have the opportunity to participate in those appointments. And so based on that reasoning, I introduced, and it was drafted by the City Attorney's Office, item 8A, amending the report, asking the city council to instruct the city treasurer to amend the Link Banking program rules and regulations, eliminate all regulatory duties of the Community Oversight Board, and to make the Community Oversight Board advisory to the city council rather than to the treasurer, and to make the rules and regulations consistent with the charter and ordinance 167683. And then it also asked that by, that the city council instruct the city treasurer to present the revised rules and regulations to the mayor and the city council for approval. I wanted City Attorney President, if we had any additional questions, because I know it was something that went through committee, and we had a lot of debate in committee, I want to thank Councilmember Pacheco's expertise in the drafting of the charter, because he had some insightful questioning, and then ultimately, instead of noting and filing, we're recommending this amendment.
Okay. Mr. Echeverria, you want to respond to?
I think Councilmember Hernandez has stated the issue quite well. The motion would preserve the council's ability to appoint five members of the Link Banking Board, and the mayor appoints four. This motion would preserve that.
All right. I have no other council members asking to be heard, please, God. So just restate that, if you would. This is, instead of note and file, you're recommending that.
We approve item 8A, the motion before.
Okay, has everybody seen 8A? It has been passed around. So open the roll on Mr. Hernandez's motion to amend the report by the adoption of 8A. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, and that, I believe, covers the whole, well, just to be sure, let's vote on the report as amended.
Okay.
Okay? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that's approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we move now to item 13, I believe.
Called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla. Anybody see Mr. Padilla? Oh, there he is. Alex, your item is up, item 13. Push the speaker button.
Can I get your support on this, Madam President?
If you talk fast.
And--
Or not at all.
I wanted to ask for your support on this, which I think is an easy one for all of us to support. We've had both some heated and some pleasant discussions when it comes to improvements in our environmental quality here in the basin, and also when it comes to different technologies that are available. I think this is a win-win pilot project, which the staff determines is relatively easy to implement, to allow for free parking of electric vehicles in the city of Los Angeles, has yet another incentive for not only the city, but for the public in general, to invest in this technology, to invest in this new product, and we'll see the benefits for years to come. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. Open the roll. I do think it's a great idea. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. I knew, I said it twice. Okay, that's item 13. Item 14, we had a member of the public who wished to be heard, but we have held a public hearing. So unless I hear a motion, we're not holding another one. Do I hear any motions? I do not hear any motions. Item 14 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Brings us to--
You have a special one?
Oh, we have special one, right.
It's not on the agenda. A motion by Councilmember Savornich and the city clerk, excuse me, the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Ms. Weingard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has to do with authorizing the Cultural Affairs Department to submit a grant application. It is due by February 28 to the California Department of Parks and Recreation for the Watts Towers Conservation Program. It took the state a fairly long time to get their guidelines in order, and that's why this is being brought in now.
All right, open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, the item is now before us. Open the roll on the item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Very efficient. That is unanimously approved, forthwith. And you're welcome. And that brings us, I believe, now to public comment. All right. I have two people who wish to be heard, first Melrose Larry Green, and then Richard Robinson.
Boy, these meetings are painful to sit through. It's painful, painful to attend these meetings. Like, I couldn't imagine being a member of the City Council. I couldn't, it's painful, it's like root canal. Have you ever watched C-SPAN? Do you ever watch the Congress in Action or the state legislature? I mean, this is unbelievable. All right, we got a city council with 15 members. I live on the border of the 4th and the 13th. We all know Congressman Faro has been ill, he's not, hasn't been here lately. And of course, Jackie Goldberg is in the Assembly, so there's nobody in the 13th. Nobody representing me. L.A. Times reports that two-thirds of you, it doesn't say which ones, but two-thirds of you have political consultants that double as lobbyists, or lobbyists that double as political consultants. So what do we have? We have a city council that bickers with two members not here, one's running for mayor, he's too busy telling the rest of the city how bad you are, and in, I don't think you're in there, I just think you bicker too much. Anyway, I invite you to Hollywood. Why don't you have meetings at the Roosevelt Hotel? I invite you to L.A. City College. You built the red line, why don't you take the red line and meet at LACC? Why don't you meet in the Valley? I invite you to take the red bus like I did last night, from Woodland Hills to Hollywood in less than one hour. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to say, I'm here to say that this city council needs to be more responsive to people that take buses from Woodland Hills to South Central. A woman I talked to last night named Robin lives in Woodland Hills, works in Woodland Hills, and lives at Adams and Normandy. Takes her five hours a day to commute on the buses. Why don't you have one bus from Woodland Hills to Adams and Normandy? A small dash-sized bus. I'm a little person, I don't have millions of dollars in the bank, I don't make your fat salaries. Why don't you be responsive to the little people who are out working right now and can't talk to you? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members, because the, Madam President, members, excuse me, because the racial divide between blacks and whites in America is evolving into class warfare, the retrenchement of racism is protracting. As the poor get poorer, the numbers of those who will not be able to compete because of racism and classism will increasingly become marginalized for-- Pardon me, public speaking isn't my forte, please bear with me while I attempt to give structure to a relatively disorganized mind. Pardon the stink group. For hundreds of years, we were beaten, tortured, and murdered for learning to read. Today, we're the majority of America's prison population, and only 10% of America's population. Excuse me, affirmative action is needed if we are to gain our freedom and gain that education President Bush, the Secretary of Education, envisions. Together, we are the best. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and what do we have left?
Motions for posting and referral.
Remember, we also have a closed session.
Yes.
Without objection, the motions are posted and referred.
And council has an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused Friday, March 2 to leave at 12:30. City business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
That clears the desk for closed session.
All right, we now need to ask those of you who are not involved in the closed session items to depart, and we have 36A through G and 37. No, I don't think it is your cue to depart. Oh, well, then, then it's your cue.
A is settlement in the amount of $480,000 in the case of Diane Cameron versus City of Los Angeles at all.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that, please. Next.
Item 36C is settlement in the case of GTSC versus Interstate Non-Fairisk Corp. at all, and that's in the amount of $30,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Also approved, forthwith on that, too. And?
36E is settlement in the case of Thompson versus City of L.A. at all, and that's in the amount of $500,000.
All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Also approved, forthwith on that, too.
That clears the table.
All right, and we have some adjourning motions. At least, I have an adjourning motion, so if everybody would please stand. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Rowan Pasternak, the mother of Susan Pasternak, who used to work for Joy Picas. She passed away Tuesday morning. She's survived by her daughter, her husband, and her grandson. Anybody else? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Request that we adjourn in memory, we failed to do this yesterday, of Dale Earnhardt, racing legend who passed away on Sunday, as you've all, I'm sure, heard in the news, as his car crashed into a wall in the last lap of the Daytona 500. Dale Earnhardt was regarded as America's greatest active stock car driver at the age of 49. He was a seven-time Winston Cup champion and known as the Intimidator. He liked to bump slower cars out of his way. In his career, he won 76 Winston Cup races, first among active drivers and sixth all-time with more than $40 million in earnings in 27-year career. Daytona was his favorite track. He had won 34 races there, a climax by his 98 victory in the Daytona 500. He had won it, he had not won it in 19 previous tries. He grew up watching his father Ralph Earnhardt drive on the NASCAR circuit, and he is survived by his wife Teresa and his son Dale Jr., who was also part of Sunday's race.
Call the roll. Thank you, we are adjourned. See you all on Friday.